Commissioners can in fact encumber or cause problems to future commissions by actions they take, either, like you said, causing us to spend money later, or causing us to spend money that we actually have to defend ourselves if we try to get out of a contract, and do get out of a contract, then it costs us money to do that.
Commissioner, thank you for coming today.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. You are an essential part of our community because you're making the dialogue happen between people that need to be dialoguing differently than they are now.
Well, I appreciate that, but it might be detrimental as your campaign to be complimenting a Californian. So just take it easy here. This is actually an interesting concept. I was talking to somebody the other day. It's like, at what point do I get to say I'm Idahoan? Like, first off, I passed a driver's license test and I only missed one, and it was not the open range question. So I will tell you that. And just like, how long do I have to wait? Like, is it like, is there like a 10-year period? Like, do I get a card at some point? I mean, what, I don't answer that question. Anyway, so there's a lot. I've spoken with a lot of people so far running for county commissioner. I mean, Ada County is a huge piece of the state, you know, obviously occupies Boise. There are budget issues, there are cultural issues, there are, you know, different cities and unincorporated areas of development. I mean, what do you want to start with? Do you want to start with budget?
Well, I guess, first of all, I introduced myself a little bit in terms of myself. I'm an native Idahoan. I'm fifth generation Idahoan. And so I have deep roots in Idaho. And one of the things that I learned growing up from my family, as well as my experience politically, as well as just living in Idaho, and in other parts of the world and the country, is people are important. Empowering people is critically important. I think that's what our country was founded on. And that's what I like to do is empower people. And over the years, and as we dialogue, I can probably give you some examples of how I've done that, trying to empower people in the budget process, if you want to talk about budget first.
Yeah. But to that point, I so appreciate that. I think the, one of the aspects of the culture and community in, you know, my former state, California, that I greatly disliked is they were taking away personal agency. And I grew up going to, you know, a single family home. I went to public school. I went to public college. I did get financial assistance going through that. And then after that, it was, look, you're on your own. I never applied for a job. I made my own business. And my wife did the exact same thing. We were together even before she graduated college. So I very much believe in personal agency and self-reliance. It is, it is an aspect of, it is an aspect of what I think makes the United States so special. And I think to the degree that we can empower people and encourage self-reliance and personal agency and autonomy, to the degree that we can do that, that's the degree that we're actually going to help the United States stay as awesome as it is.
And I totally agree with that. And one of the things that we've done, that I've done over my career, is trying to figure out ways that I can empower people. I worked in Washington DC for a while, for our senator and congressman from Idaho. And one of the things we tried to do is get back to Idaho. And it was difficult, as, you know, 2,000 miles away, to keep in touch with Idaho. The only way we can do that is to come back and then connect with people individually. Just as an example, when I was working for Senator Craig, and I was working on a farm bill, we had, we tried, our goal was to have a meeting in every county on the farm bill and invite farmers to come so they could dialogue with us about what the new farm bill wanted, we wanted in the new farm bill. We had 52 meetings, and we met with farmers, like in Camas County, there were like, five people there. But that was okay, because we wanted, then I created a book for the senator, so that when he was talking in the committee about the reauthorization of the farm bill, and we're talking about like, the dairy title of the farm bill, he'd say, oh, here's what Jerome County, one of my primary dairy counties, is saying about what they want in this bill. That's what I liked, that's what I've tried to do, is empower people in that way, so that I can directly connect with people on a one-on-one basis.
Yeah, that always yields, in my opinion, the best, the best results. Let's, let's start on budget. And can you explain the budgeting process? Because, and again, I know that's a large question, a large task, but could you give me some ideas of how the budgeting process is structured in Ada County, and how, you know, whether or not it's, there have been accusations of, hey, look, you know, we're not, we're not being as efficient with the budget, we're not, you know, spending it on the right things. But can you just give me some background, so we understand kind of a broader idea of how money is managed in Ada County? MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast, and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.
Well, it is very complicated, as you could say. We have a $350 million budget in Ada County. So it is very complicated. But basically, it, we review the income, which is, we get income from, from other sources, like sales tax revenue and so forth. And then we have, our basic budget is property tax. We get property tax twice a year, in December and June, July. And so we have to keep a cash budget. Then we have a budget stabilization fund that is stabilized, if you, if you, if you listen to the guru on, on the radio about how to do your budget, you have to have an emergency fund, that's basically what it is. And so, and then we have our fund balance, which is money that we don't spend. We've appropriated, like, if we appropriate money for electricity, and it's less than, then we have that in a budget stabilization fund. So we have basically three pockets. And as we use that, we use it, the cash flow is what we primarily use. And if we dip into the emergency fund, the fund balance, those two other funds, and we deplete them, then we come short. So we have to keep money in those funds as well. So it appears we have more money than we really need, as you were describing. But we need to have those, so that we have the emergencies, the situations that we need to take care of. So as we do that, we do it in a very open process. And you can go onto the Ada County website. It lists all the dates and times when we have the individual budgets, the processes that we're reviewing. And you can go down to the actual item level. And we will have a public hearing, we have public hearings. So we invite the public to come to those public hearings, so that we can, in fact, we do not hide anything. That transparency is one of the hallmarks of this commission, as in particular, so that we do not hide anything. And so you can go through that budget process. But if you take away some of the money in this year, then next year, it appears you've balanced the budget in an artificial way. It's, it's as if you're taking, if you make $60,000 a year, and you want to spend $80,000 a year, you have to either borrow money, or get it out of your savings. And counties can't borrow money, so they get it, have to get it out of their savings. It appears like you're doing okay that year, if you spend $80,000, because you take it out of savings. But eventually, you'll come out of saving, you'll run dry on your savings. So you will have to balance that budget in a different way than you did before. So that's part of the, that's part of what we need to look at as well.
Gotcha. So essentially, with the three buckets, again, the cash bucket, the savings account bucket, and then the, and then the last bucket, which is, hey, look, if we budgeted 10 bucks for this, and it actually only cost us nine, we put that $1 over here in this last bucket, to essentially, you know, incorporate in some other way, however. So you're saying, essentially, you could look really good if you drain the other two buckets, and deliver, you know, whatever kind of financial relief to the county that, that they, they might receive if you drained the savings bucket, and then the excess bucket, essentially. But you'd have a problem, because then you drained your savings, and you drained your backup-backup savings, which was the additional one.
Correct. And then, and then eventually, you would, you would have to do some drastic measures, increase taxes, or whatever, to make up that difference.
Gotcha. With, there were a couple, a couple of specific items that were brought up by some other people, that I came to find out after the fact, were not during your tenure. So one of them was the, was the new morgue. That was, you know, something around 40-plus million dollars. That was brought up by one of your opponents, but then I found out later on, that was not something that you approved during your, your tenure. So it's not like you put your stamp of approval on, like, okay, let's spend 46 million instead of, you know, some alternative. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we actually tried to get out of the contract. And it would have cost us more money and more hassle than, than it was worth it. So we did, we did not, we were not able to get out of that contract. But it was a commitment, and that's a good, that's a good point. Current commissioners can in fact encumber or cause problems to future commissions by actions they take, either, like you said, causing us to spend money later, or causing us to spend money that we actually have to defend ourselves if we try to get out of a contract, and do get out of a contract, then it costs us money to do that. And that's happened on occasion as well.
So you were kind of in a jam either way, though. You inherit this morgue contract. To get out of it costs millions of dollars. To stay in it costs you millions of dollars. So no matter what, you just inherited it, and then, you know, this is something that brought up as mismanagement of funds in Ada County.
And, and we're dealing with it now. And as a matter of fact, we just had a meeting this morning with our procurement people, which we do on a regular basis. And they were telling us some of the things they are doing, to efficiently manage that project in a different way. And one of the things that we found as well, that the new coroner found, when he was looking at that building, and because we inherited it, like you said, we inherited it and got a new coroner as well. And when he was looking at that contract, he found that some of the items on there were inflated items. Like, they had a couch for like, $10,000.
That's a nice couch.
And some picnic tables for $5,000, that kind of thing. Those are the kind of things. We did, in fact, were able to fine tune it, and save money on it. But it was already committed to the county, and the county had to do it, yes.
Understood. Aside from the, from the corners, talk to me about the jail. Because the jail bond obviously did not pass, right? There's public knowledge. But the jail, for instance, one item in the jail that is brought up is, one, we're not just asking for more beds. Or not me, I'm not asking for anything. But the sheriff was not asking for just more bedrooms. But he was saying things that are fundamentally pieces of the operations, like the kitchen, is, you know, rated for 1,000 meals a day, and they're producing at this point, something like 3,000 meals a day. So there are real fundamental aspects of the happenings at the jail, that just, look, it's not working anymore. They have all kinds of incredible outpatient programs as well. I've spoken with Sheriff Clifford quite, quite a few times about this. The things where, for instance, you have, say you have a 50-day sentence, and you also have a job. Like, well, look, instead of making the person lose his or her job, we have them go home, right, during the week, go to work, make your money, make your house payments. And then on the weekend, you come back and serve your sentence two days at a time. That seems, to me, I had never heard anything about that. It's like, so you serve two days of your jail time at, per week. It's like, yeah, but think about it. We don't have somebody who's now unemployed. They're continuing on their life. They're going to serve their sentence. It's, it's a great way to do it. So alternative sentencing options, or alternative ways of dealing with whatever has happened, those are things being utilized. We also don't have, for instance, people serving sentences for, you know, like a simple marijuana crime, or something like that. Because they're really trying to reduce the population in the jail by saying, hey, look, do you actually have to physically be in this detention center, where we have paid guards, and we have to keep society safe from you? Or can we find some other way for you, for justice to be done? It appears that they have really stretched their capacity to do that to its limit. They asked for money, they didn't get it. Where do we go from there?
That's a perfect example of, of how previous boards can affect current boards' actions. And, or, we looked at it, because the commissioners have to inspect the jail by, by law, have to inspect the jail at least once a quarter, unannounced. So we go over to the jail, go through the jail. And so I've done it now in my 16 months, I've done it several times. And we get to see what they're doing with what they have. They're doing very well with what they have. And like you said, 80%, of the inmates there are felons. Those are people we do not want to let out of jail. They need to be in jail and serving their time. But those who can be let out, they've been innovative on how they do it, as you described, work release, other methodologies, so that we can, in fact, keep the jail for those people that actually need to be there, for the protection of society. So what, what we're doing now is, back to the transparency that I talked about before, one of the things we, we could have, we could have done, what one of my opponents said, a previous administration did on the coroner's office, they just encumbered us to pay for a facility that they didn't go out to the taxpayers for. We didn't want to do that. We said, okay, if, if we're going to spend taxpayers' money for this kind of a facility, and this amount of money, we're going to go out and see what the taxpayers want to do. And if they want to raise their taxes for it, then we will do that and build the facility. The taxpayers have spoken, they said they didn't want to do it that way. So in the process, in my two short years, we did, in fact, set aside money, back to those buckets I was talking about, in the fund balance, we set aside fund balance money. We had about $20 million that we had set aside, reserved for the jail. Again, if pre, if previous boards had done that over a period of time, we would have had enough. So we did that. We had the 20 million, because there's going to be about $69 million estimate for the new jail. So we were, we only asked for a bond for 49 million, because we're going to use the 20 million. So now what we're doing is looking at it exactly the way you said. We're looking at ways that we can address the issues that are at the jail. It's like, if you have a leaky roof, you have to address it. And we have some of those kinds of situations in the jail right now. The kitchen is one of them. The dishwashing, the machine has to be replaced, and that's going to be about three quarters of a million dollars.
That is a big dishwasher machine.
Yes. Good. Well, when they do the volume you're talking about, about 4,000 meals a day.
Right.
Which is what they do, about 4,000 meals a day. So they, that's a big dishwasher. And another thing, back, back to the contingency fund that I was talking about, that, you know, the, the budget stabilization fund, again, the jail, and their freezer went down this year. It was $250,000 for their freezer. So we had to use that money. We hadn't budgeted for it. It's in what we call a, yeah, ballot, we identify all the needs of the county. And there's about $14 million there. And that's like, replacing the, the, the things at the jail, air conditioners, those kinds of things that have a lifespan. This year, because we have a fund balance, we're going to replace some of those, so we don't have to go back out and put that in our budget for the next year. That's what, that's what we can do with the budget stabilization fund, and the fund balance, if we budget properly. And I, I think the county has budgeted properly pretty well. So what we're doing right now, back to your original question, the jail is, we have the 20 million. So we're now in the process, and they reported on us today, again, procurement. We've asked them to go back, and figure out what it would do to incrementally go through a process of doing what we need to do at the jail. Spend the 20 million that we have right now, and then take fund balance, or other, other things that we have to do over a period of time. And we may, we may not have to actually go out for another bond. We may be able to use it as we go along. But if we do have to go out for another bond, then we will do that as well. But we're going to look at it in terms of how we have to do it.
Right. And it's a, it's a difficult thing. I know, in speaking with a lot of people about the bond, when it was coming around, a lot of people said right away, that, that I spoke with, you know, friends of mine, they're like, wow, they're criminals, let them, you know, hang out. It's like, okay, but one of the primary issues, first off, this is part of the judicial system. So somebody gets arrested, they're innocent until proven guilty, they're held at the jail. So, and, and, you know, Sheriff Clifford, I believe, and the deputies and everyone else, they do a good job of, of arresting the right people. But they're still innocent until proven guilty. So the idea that it's like, hey, these people are criminals, let them live in squalor. It's like, well, first off, they're not all criminals, because they're innocent until proven guilty. The second thing is, you don't have, like, the jail is, is a transient population by design, in that, you know, we have prisons to hold people for like, life sentences and whatnot. And the jail is not designed to be a prison. The jail is designed to have people for a certain period of time, you know, get them through the judicial system, you know, all of these, all of those things that are involved in actually figuring out guilt. And then, you know, some people are serving sentences. But again, the, when you have somebody who's like, you know, a murderer or something of that nature, they get transported to the prison, right? They're not just hanging out their life sentence in the jail. And the last piece is, it's going to affect the people that you want to protect the most, which are the employees of the jail system. You can't, if you have a bunch of criminals, or, and you know, again, not all of them are criminals, but if you have a bunch of, a good portion of those people are criminals, if you have them living in worse and worse circumstances, yeah, maybe you feel better about that, because you're like, ah, forget it, let them, you know, tolerate breadcrumbs and sleep on the floor. That's fine, until they have riots and kill somebody working at the jail, right? Like, that's, you make the living conditions and working conditions, or excuse me, the working conditions in particular, way worse for, for those working for the correction system. And that, that to me was one of those green, you know, lightbulb moments, where it's like, oh my gosh, I had never really thought about that. And I have lots of friends in jujitsu, shout out Alliance Jujitsu, but I have a lot of friends there that work in that system. And it's like, gosh, man, it's really rough recognizing that people's desire to stick it to criminals, and say, you should have a worse living experience for the time you're in the jail, makes your life considerably more dangerous, you know, makes your wife or husband worry more about you when they go to work. It was a, it's kind of a sobering moment.
Absolutely. The, that, both of those are important. The protection of the population at large, the general population of the county, from criminals. And then, the people in the jail themselves need to be treated properly. And then, of course, the workers in the jail, they, they need to have a good work environment as well. And so all, all of those things are component parts of making sure that the jail functioned properly. And a shout out to the sheriff, he's doing a fantastic job of fitting all those pieces together, and juggling the pieces that need to be juggled to make it work.
Yeah, it's a tough situation. Shifting gears, if we may, unless you have, do you have anything else you really want to chat about with regard to the budget, or?
No, probably as we go along.
If you think of anything, we'll come back. No, don't sweat. Another big piece is unincorporated development, right? We're sitting in an unincorporated master planning community right now, right? We're not in Boise, we're just Ada County. And there, that takes pressure off some of the problems that you see with, with cities not being able to build enough, right? But it also is a strain, a considerable strain on the cities. For instance, I mean, we, you know, we pull, we pull all emergency services from surrounding areas. We go into, you know, the, I would go into the city of Eagle to go shopping, or, you know, use sports facilities, or things of that nature. And we don't pay taxes to anybody for those things. Right? Now, I'm not saying we don't pay taxes at all to the county, but we're not, a friend of mine actually has, we pulled this up today, because he was talking about property tax. We pulled up his property tax. His property tax living in Boise is about double my property tax living here. And we have similarly, similarly valued homes. And we, we both, both of us couldn't believe it. It's like, no, our property tax is like, 0.3% of assessed value. And he said, that's absolutely not true. We were both right. It absolutely is not true in his case, and it absolutely is true in my case. So the development in unincorporated Ada County seems like a cure-all for a lot of congestion and problems, but it also comes with its own issues and problems and strains on communities. What do we do? How do we address the crunch for housing and the need for more housing, without straining existing systems?
Well,
What's a silver bullet?
The silver bullet.
Yeah, right.
Here, I'm here to give you this.
Yeah, right.
Well, we, Ada County and Boise City have a joint Ada County Housing, A- Ada County, Boise Ada County Housing. So we're working together to try to address that. But I would like to go back to your, your point of Boise City and Ada County, in terms of the taxes, the property taxes. Because the, that's an example of, each one of the taxing districts in Ada County are independent. They set their own budgets. They give their budgets to the commissioners. And then the commissioners take all 41 taxing districts, put the budget together, and then the 22% that's Ada County that we have, we, meaning the commissioners, have control over, put that together and say, okay, look, here's what the assessed evaluation of the county is. Here's the budget that needs to be met. Here's what we have to assess to meet that budget. And so when people go, if we reduce Ada County's budget, and reduce Ada County's portion of the property tax, like, two years ago, the county commissioners took $12 million off of the county portion of the budget. Rod Beck and I were, were talking with some residents of Boise City, and he was saying, Rod Beck was saying, we, we reduced the property tax by $12 million last year. And they said, where? And he said, well, where do you live? Well, I live in the city of Boise. Give me your tax bill, let me, let me look at it. And then he looked at it, and he said, yes, we reduced ours, the county's portion, this much. The city of Boise increased theirs that much. That's where your taxes went. That's where our $12 million went. So if we're not careful, people can, people can look at their taxes and say, the commissioners did it to me, when in actual fact, we didn't, the taxing entities. So that's why I would recommend everybody pay attention to not only the county's budget, which is only 22% of your property tax budget, but the cities and the school districts take 60% of your property tax money. Over 60%, it's about 65% of your property tax money goes to school districts and cities. So if you live in a city, and a school district, which we all live in a school district, then look at those budgets, and then it works itself down to the cemetery districts, the fire districts, and all of those districts. Mesquite abas- Mesquite abasement district, and that sort of thing. So people need to be looking at their, at their property tax in a very focused way. And not all the people in Ada County are in the 41 taxing districts. Usually, usually it's seven to 10 districts that you're in. Look at those, and write on your tax bill, it's required, the, the name of the individual that you have to contact, and the telephone number. And I think the legislature put it in there, they're going to have more information on the tax bill now, where, when they actually have their, their budget hearings for each one of those entities. So I would suggest that everybody go to their taxing districts, all of them, and engage on the budget, including the county.
Yeah. But you're, now you're talking about people doing things. They don't, they don't even go through, like, I know what you're talking about. I've been looking at private tax bills for some time. Like, I can see in my mind's eye exactly where all the numbers are. It's like, even the contact information, like, I know exactly where this stuff is. But, you know, here I was talking to my friend, who's, you know, in his 60s, very intelligent guy. And even he and I were going back and forth about this. And I had to pull up his bill, and then my bill, and compare him, say like, okay, this is the problem, right? These are the issues that you're dealing with. But yeah, it's a, it's a complex thing.
Well, actually, my, my motto is empower people, not, not government. And I would suggest this in terms of helping each one of us, because all of us have baseball for our kids, softball, whatever, as your kids are growing up. And so you have a lot of, I mean, you can't go to 41 taxing districts and there are public meetings. But what you can do is, is carve it up. As I, as I said to individuals, you, everybody cannot do everything. Everybody can't be a commissioner, everybody can't be a school board member. But you can engage with people who are watching. So people can go to the school board meeting, and then you can, you can dialogue with them and say, this is what's happening at school board meetings. So you can divvy it up, and empower, empower all sorts of people to do that. I, I did that when, when I was in public office, all the times I've been in public office, even when I've been a staff person. Have somebody that you can call. I, when I was campaigning for the legislature, I, the one question I ask is, what can I do for you as your legislator? Because I can't do everything, but I can do one thing, just tell me one thing. I had a teacher, the door that I knocked on was a teacher, and he said, what I would like you to do is just come to my classroom, see, I said, you don't even, I don't want you to speak, I just be in my classroom, see the kind of students I have, the kind of books I have, the kind of physical facility I have, everything I have to deal with. So when you vote on those issues, you will know what I have to deal with, and all those issues. And I thought that was a great idea. So when I was in the legislature, I tried to visit all 17 public schools in my district at least once a year, and do it just like that. And I told the principal, I don't want to talk. As far as the students are concerned, I could just be a parent, or somebody from the school district monitoring this teacher. I don't, you don't need to announce me there, I just want to see what's going on and how this is doing. And that, that's what we need to do as individuals as well. Help elected officials, because I need, I can't be everywhere, I can't be in Star and Eagle and Kuna all at the same time. I need to have people there helping me do what I just described, be there for me. And I just, as a matter of fact, over the weekend, I had somebody call me, well, it was on Friday, and I got a result over the weekend. It was an issue that I needed to refer him to somebody. I was able to refer him to somebody, and he got an answer to his question. I didn't have the answer, but I referred him to somebody that had the answer, and he got the answer, and he texted me back and with thumbs up, said, thank you very much.
Great, there you go. Hey, we're living in the communication era. It's pretty straightforward. So, awesome. I'm, I love your sentiment here, which is, again, let's, let's work together, eyes and ears, let's figure it out. What do we do with the unincorporated development? Is that a solution that we can lean on? Is it, is it taxing too much to the, to the cities? What, where do we go?
Well, I don't think it's taxing too much to the cities, because unincorporated Ada County is developing. But like, here, where we are right now, the, put the- The, put the obligation on the developer. When they develop, you put conditions on what they developed. And this is a development we're in right now is is very conscientious. They're doing a very good job. They're having a, they have their own water treatment plant. They're using their aquifer. Water is one of my major issues that I like to, they're recharging their aquifer. Uh, so if we if we plan properly, we can have the development that is, doesn't impact negatively. The rest of the county is actually positive for the rest of the county. Because now this community here is self sufficient in a way that it doesn't have to have other other things happening. And part of your, part of your property tax pays for the sheriff coming out here. Uh, and part of your property tax pays for some of the other things that you have, the EMS. Uh, your property tax pays for that. So that's a countywide. The cities and the counties work together on that. And most people don't realize, um, cities do not have to have a police force. The county does have to have a police force. By constitution and law, they have to have a police force. Cities do not. And so Star, uh, Eagle and Kuna. They're they are component parts of the Ada County Sheriff's Department. Their Meridian and Boise both have their independent police departments, but but they don't have to. So it's working together like that, that we can, in fact, provide all those services. At a minimal cost, like the the nine one one center, it's a county center. We provide all the nine one one services for all all the fire and search and rescue and police for the county. And we're working together to do that.
Gotcha. Um, you mentioned EMS. This is actually something really near and dear to me. I have several friends. That are current or or past EMS individuals. What, what can be done to actually increase that service? Or do you think that that needs to happen? One concern that that some people have had is, you know, you go to some of the unincorporated areas, you might have, you know, like, you know, essentially just really long wait times. And the EMS, uh, EMS individuals, like for instance, the ambulance service, they're not part of a union. They don't have, they don't have the backing, but they are the hours, some of the hours that they go on, you know, forty eight on, seventy two off, things of that nature, extremely taxing. And they are kind of like the whipping boys of of the emergency services, first responders, and you know, not to put them down or anything. They're doing great jobs. They are the reason people get to the hospitals. But is is there something that can be done to improve that a little bit? Or do you feel that we're sufficiently manned and and compensated for the work that they do?
Well, it's it's like everything else. There's always, whether it's your own personal budget or the county budget, there are always places that. If you had more money, you could do a better job. But what we do is they they look at response times. And they look at places where they can cooperate with other places, uh, like they're going into fire stations now so that we can, like. City of Meridian just built two new fire stations, or in the process of building two new fire stations. We have an EMS facility in each one of those. It's costing us less and and the city less to do it cooperatively, doing it that way. The the one out at Spring Rock, the where Kuna, Kuna is building up, well, Spring Rock is actually building a fire station. In conjunction with Kuna, uh, Fire District, and we're going to have an EMS facility there. That's the kind of thing that leverages and helps increase it. Uh, but we we look at response times. Uh, in the budget that's coming up, uh, EMS is is a separate taxing district. Speaking of taxing districts, it is a separate taxing district. It has its limits that are established by the legislature. Uh, and it's geography that's established by the legislature, but the, uh, that is something that. The legislature this year, we supported a bill that would have changed that funding formula. So we could have, in fact, had more money to go to EMS. Uh, it didn't pass, but we're still working on it. Uh, so that we can get more money for EMS in in Ada County. Another place that I've been working on, because when I worked in DC, we worked on PILT, which is Payment in lieu of Taxes. Which is the federal government, because they own so much land, especially in the West. They own land and so, and of course, they don't pay property tax, but we still have to provide services to those areas like EMS services. Uh, we have over three hundred thousand acres of of federal land in the in the county, in Ada County. So what we're trying to do is work with the congressional delegation to change that formula so that we do, in fact, EMS is a component part. Of the funding formula that reimburses counties for the EMS services they provide on federal lands. Just Clark County, for example, and I don't know if you know where Clark County is, north of Idaho Falls. They, in visiting with their commissioners, they were telling me that of the eighty three EMS calls. As I'm recalling their numbers, eighty three percent, eighty three of their EMS calls last year, they had. Only three of them were not on federal land.
Right, right. Especially when you have large recreational areas. I mean, um, I used to do a lot of cycling up the mountain that happened to be in a state park. And, you know, when people crash on the mountain, you gotta get a helicopter, you gotta get all kinds of, you know, whatever, just just riding bikes or had emergency problems. So, yeah, I completely understand. You have a large wilderness area. You still need response times there.
So we're, so we're trying to leverage, I guess, money and other places as well.
Yeah.
Uh, and the and the state, part of what the the bill would address is, is having. The state participate in a different way on in EMS as well.
Gotcha, gotcha. Um, speaking of recreation, I, I'm just finishing up The Anxious Generation, a fantastic book. I highly recommend it for anybody who has kids. But one of the big things it was saying is, look, the only way we're going to stop kids from consuming. Technology and social media is to stop them from consuming that. But you also, in in the long, long term. You can't just say, stop and then like sit there and stare at them. You have to actually give them engagements. One of the big things was recommending, and again, the author makes a number of recommendations at the end, but he was saying, look, we need to increase recreation. The recreation, the parks, walkable parks, large, large parks that that are centrally located, all these different things. We need to offer people outdoor activities and outdoor engagements that are sufficient to take the time. And fill that gap that people will inevitably feel when they put down their phones, which they absolutely should. Talk to me about the Expo Center. Talk to me about, uh, the the parks and and recreational areas that that Ada County is managing.
Uh, fortunately, we have a robust Parks and Recreation Department in in Ada County, and it isn't costing that much money. If you go, if you go on the Ada County website, speaking of budget again, if you go on the Ada County website, there's a, there's a place where you can go onto the budget. And you can actually look at each one of the departments and you can click on it and say, how much of your property tax is going to fund that? Particular Parks and Rec, it's about three, um, less than five dollars per homeowner in Ada County for the parks that we have. We have Barber Park, which is is an Ada County park, which most people don't realize that's where you put in to float the river. Uh, and then part of the trail, part of the green belt is on Ada County property and we we support that. The ridges to rails, most of that is in Ada County. Uh, and then we have the Ada County and we work with the cities as well, like I said. And, uh, the Eagle, uh, Ada County Bike Park, which is over here at the at a trailhead. So we have a lot of parks, uh, that we actually are funding now and trails. Uh, back to Expo, Expo is a, uh, a gem in the county. Uh, and some people have wanted to sell it for development. Uh, I like, I like to compare it to. We have an opportunity now and we are developing eighty acres of it. We're going to do, we're we're working through a process of. Of developing the whole, restructuring the whole, a little over two hundred acres. Eighty acres of it is going to be a major new park. We've, we're going to be letting the contracts for it here shortly. Uh, the designs are pretty well in place, but we've gone out to the public. Uh, and asked them that question. And interestingly enough, when we went out to the public and asked them the question for whether they wanted to. Sell it and build a park or a fair in another part of the county. Eighty percent of the people said they wanted to keep it at where it is.
There's a certain amount of inefficiency or perhaps, you know, leaving something on the table, uh, to preserve history that I think people will tolerate.
Right.
Well, apparently eighty percent agree with that.
Well, and and I like to compare it because I don't know many people have been to New York, but if you go to Central Park in New York. It's, and most people don't realize it, it's six hundred and forty acres. It's the equivalent of a square mile. So if you put a square mile in Idaho, plop it down in the middle of Manhattan, that's Central Park. And I can imagine that, uh, in the eighteen hundreds, when the whole island wasn't developed yet.
Right.
People were probably saying, we can sell it for development. We can put a lot of money. We can sell it for development. So I think that was probably controversial. I haven't looked at the history, but I'm I'm sure it was controversial at one point in time. At this point in time, you would never get development on it, Central Park in a in in Manhattan now. So I think that's what we have to preserve in in the fairgrounds and Expo is. It's going to be a gem for generations into the future, kind of like Central Park, because it is central Ada County. It's a unique piece of property in the central part of the county that can't be recreated. Uh, and so we just need to figure out what we're going to do with it, which we're what we're trying to do. And we're getting public input on that. We've had a lot of public input. Even the park itself, the eighty acre park, we redesigned part of it because we had public meetings. Uh, one of the things we had from one of those public meetings, just as an example, we were going to have a, we called it Skate Park, but. We're calling it a, uh, Wheels Down Park now because it's, because it's, because it's going to have roller skating. It's going to have all sorts of things. And one of the things we got, I didn't realize we have roller skating clubs here that compete. Around the country. I did not realize until we had a public meeting. And so we're having, we, part of the park. Is it being developed so that they will have a place to go? Because they didn't have a place to go in the county. They are, we're always searching for places to go in the county.
And you likely will not be able to answer this, but when you say roller skating, you're talking inline skates or actual rectangular roller skates?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, like, the classic roller skate was a shoe with a wheel in each quadrant.
That I, that I know.
Right. But a lot of like, you know, skate parks are in, are in line where it's, you know, like, like a.
Now I know what you're talking about.
It doesn't matter. You probably don't know.
And and it would be both, actually.
Oh, awesome.
But they, but they would have a facility that they could actually have races and they could have competitions and.
Oh, my gosh, that would be wild if you had the races. Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be built so that they can, we can do that.
That's like the short, short course from the Winter Olympics.
Right.
They have, I mean, those are, those are awesome.
And another, another interesting we've, thing we found, and one of the, I personally found is we we had a, a young man who is. He competes nationally. I don't know if he's gone internationally, but he's competes nationally for, um, skateboarding. Uh, and so he helped us design some things there so that we could actually have competitions, skateboard competitions.
Man, how cool. I had no idea we had one of those guys locally. They're pretty, I don't know if you've ever seen any of the skateboard competitions, but they're wild.
They are, and my son skateboarded.
Look at that.
He was growing up too, so. So that's the kind of thing that the public helped us design. That's, that's going to be a park that's going to. People will really enjoy that park for generations.
Yeah.
The, another thing we did in that park is, uh, the old, the old racetrack, because there was a horse racetrack there. What they did when they created the racetrack is they filled in part of what was a wetland at the time. And so we're going to take some of that fill material out of there, make it back into a wetland. So it'll do two things. One is it'll, if you've been to the tidal basin in in DC, part of what the tidal basin is for is when the. Tide comes in and out. That's why they call it tidal basin. The tide affects clear up to Washington DC, the Potomac River clear up to Washington DC. So they had the tidal basin so it wouldn't flood in in the high tides. And that's what it was originally built for. And now it's obviously is is not nicer. That's what we built, we're building in the park as well. It's a basin that'll be able to ebb and flow with the amount of water that goes down the river. So that it'll actually leave some of the flooding as well, but in this, at the same time, it'll go, it's going to be a wetland. So it will also, some of the runoff that's going from from the streets and so forth, it'll go through there. It'll actually clean some of the water before it goes back into the river. So it's, it, the the design of the park is multipurposes.
That sounds awesome. Um, you mentioned water as one of your big priorities. This is not something I've talked to many people about. Help me understand. What, what are you concerned about with water?
Water as, uh, one of the senators that I worked with, uh, used to say when he, when he gave his talk about water was. He said, uh, here in Idaho, he'd say, folks, we live in a desert. And then he'd say it like five times. By the way, if you hadn't noticed, we live in a desert. And and so just to get people's mindset on. That's what we, we live in a desert and because we live in a desert, right here in the, in the base of the mountains. We get about twelve inches of moisture a year. That's snow as well in the valley. The the mountains, of course, store, we got more water up in the mountains that's stored in the in the reservoirs. So what we have to do, when the original people came into the valley, they used the water, riparian water, just water out of the river.
Sure.
Well, that was enough until more people came. Then they had to build the dams. They built the dams. They stored water up there. Uh, now we have, and they drilled wells. Uh, those wells, of course, take water out of what they call aquifers, which is underground storage. Those aquifers are fed in some way, shape or form by other water, either from coming down from the mountains naturally. Or because of irrigation or whatever. So what we need to do in this valley is look at the Upper Valley in Idaho. Which is having water wars as we speak, uh, try to get ahead of that. And of course, you know what's happening down in Arizona, New Mexico and Nevada and California with the Colorado River water. Uh, they appropriated water out of the Colorado River based on what they thought was the norm. They found now that it isn't the norm. And so Lake Powell isn't filling up and Lake Mead isn't filling up the same way they thought it was going consistently. That's what we need to do here in this valley. And it goes to what you were asking, the first question about development. Water is a critical part of development, because if we don't take care of our water, the underground water, the storage water. The water we use for irrigation every day. That's why I said here, where we're sitting, they have a confined aquifer. They pull the water out of the aquifer, they use it, and then they have a water treat, water treatment plant, processes it. And that water then goes back onto the public areas and they actually put it in ponds and it settles through those ponds and goes back. And recharges the aquifer so that they can use the water again.
I had no idea we had that much of a closed loop system here. So we literally treat it sufficiently, obviously. And then essentially put it through the natural filtration of sur- surface and then it sinks down.
Right. Uh, and so it's, it's, and that was what the developers. Back to what you were asking about how unincorporated Ada County can help, this is how we can help developers. Do that so that they actually aren't impacting the only, the only water doesn't have to bring water out here. Because they get theirs from well, their water from wells too. So that has to be monitored where they get their water from and how much is being used. Uh, vis a vis how much is being recharged. So one of the things that I've done since I've been a commissioner in that regard and far as development. Because my background basically is in natural resources and agriculture, so I had some some semblance of understanding of that. Uh, so most people go to a hearing, know I'm going to ask a water question about development. Uh, but the, uh, so one of the things that we've done is we've had water summits, which means we've called. All the water users, like the New York Canal Company, water districts, uh, the Olya Water. University of Idaho, because they're the land grant university, all the major water interests into a meeting. Decide, uh, discuss what we're each one of us is individually doing and then how we can work together to to make sure we use. The water we have more effectively. Uh, one of the things is Hubbard Redevore, which is out south of town. Uh, the county has a lease on it from the Department of Lands. It's, it's a reservoir that actually seeps, seeps water out of it. It was built originally for a storage facility, but to store water like Lake Lowell, but it seeps water.
Sure.
So what we're doing now is we're studying where that water's going. We have monitoring wells and so the, when the water from. Uh, flood floodwater, so that doesn't go down the river, it goes there and they store it in that, in that reservoir. Where's it going? What's it doing? We're doing that kind of study. We're, we've done well studies since I've been commissioner. On the status of wells, because they're having wells going dry in South Ada County, what's causing that. Uh, and so we're, we're trying to address the water issue before we get into water battles between all the competing forces for. For the water we have.
Gotcha. Now, when you were saying that you can encourage developers to to follow a model like you you described, because it's more of a circular closed loop. What, wh- what do you mean, what would Ada County, uh, what would Ada County's part be in? In helping people do something like that?
If a developer comes in for a large development like this, when they have to come in with a development plan, which has all the component parts of it, how long it's going to take? How many houses are going to have, where they're going to get their water, where they're going to. houses they're going to have, where they're going to get their water, where they're going to, how they're going to deal with their sewage, all of that. That has to be part of their development plan. That's where the county can help them.
Gotcha.
Help developers do that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And developers are interested in doing it. I mean, the development community, they live here too, and they, they don't want our county to be destroyed either. So.
Right, right. That's, that's one of those classic cases of, well, they just want to make money. And it always kills me when somebody says they just want to do this. It's like, is it not possible to have two competing motivations? Or not even two competing, two parallel motivations? Like, yeah, everybody wants to make money in their, in their chosen profession or employment, whatever it might be. But you can also want to do something good or beneficial or add value to the community as well. It's, again, I.
They're not mutually exclusive.
They're not mutually exclusive. And that's not to say every developer, you know, has a heart of gold and is out to do the best things. But it also is, in my opinion, like, look, we shouldn't vilify developers either, right? Like.
Correct.
There, there are plenty of ways you can make development more difficult and it ultimately lands on the consumer. Because housing prices are going to go up, you're going to have fewer homes. This is a desirable area. It's not going to be good for everyone if, you know, developers stop coming in here, which has been the case in a lot of places, not here.
Right. Development, any growing thing require, that's what it requires. It has to have growth.
Right.
Any living thing, I should say, has to have growth to survive. And a community is the same way. And it's just a matter of how we do it. Not, it's, it, do you just let your tree grow and bend over? Or do you try to make it go, grow straight? We need to do that with our community too. Just figure out what we can do and ma- make development happen orderly and positively for the community.
Gotcha. Commissioner, we've talked about a lot of things. Is there anything I've missed? And again, I'm, I'm sure I've missed a bunch, but is there anything that you want to, you want to touch on?
Well, I guess, I, just the, the people component, because we didn't get into some of the people components. I, what, my political career has been basically figuring out ways to help people. Like I said, with the Farm Bill, I, I worked in the Reagan administration on a private sector initiative, which actually brought private sector businesses together. And we, this was one of those things where the, it was a government program that actually did go away. It was a private sector initiative and the President Reagan had lots of those. But we brought businesses together. It was technology for disabled people, because the idea was, there's a lot of technology in the space program or like robotics, et cetera. How do we make that available to disabled people who are missing limbs or whatever, or quadriplegics? So that's sort of, how, how do we help them live a better life? So what we did is we created a private sector initiative with major likes, General Motors and Boeing and some of those who actually are in the aerospace program. It brought them together, created catalysts of how they could work together. They dedicated some of their engineers to help disabled people. And so then, once, once we had provided the catalyst for bringing them together, then we stepped away. The government did, stepped away. And that's when I left the Farm Bill Services and went to another department, because that, that project was dismantled. So that, that's the kind of thing, or even like I, I said, so this is, anybody who's listening, a request for people who actually have an expertise that they think would be valuable to the county, to come to me and, so that I can have access to it. As just as an example, excuse me, I had a situation where we had, in the legislature, I had, I was on rev and tax and we had a, a bill on a patent law bill. First of all, I'm not an attorney and secondly, I know nothing about patent law. So, but I happen to know a patent law attorney. And so I just texted in the bill and said, please look at this, give me some feedback. And so he was able to do that. And so we were able to work it out and I was able to be comfortable with the bill. And it was parido. That's the kind of thing that we need to be. And so people need to understand that they have some expertise that's valuable. Just because an official is an elected official, does not mean they know everything, even though some people try to say they do. So they really rely on a lot of people. And the same thing, and we, we, since I've been in the, in the county, I've tried to do the same thing with, with individuals, workers in the county. Because county, public employees have the same, they, they pay taxes. They like to guard their, their money, because it's their money they're working with, because they pay taxes. They have a vested interest in that. And I, again, just a department head that we were talking to this morning, he was running through with us some things that he had found that had helped, it's going to, he's going to be able to save $250,000 in the budget. If we empower people to do that, they will come forward. We don't, we don't have to mandate. People will do that. They're, obviously there's bad apples in every bushel, but for the most part, people are genuinely interested in doing good things for their community, for their, if you drive through the, because when I lived in DC, I drove back and forth to Idaho like 15 times. So we tried to take different routes every time and not stay on the freeway. But if you just go through Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, wherever, and just sit down with people, they are interested in raising a family, lower property taxes, lower taxes, having good schools for their kids, and having, having a good life. That genuinely, that's what most people want and that's their goal. And so we just need to empower those people to help us as public servants do that.
Right. And understand the consequences of, of specific bills, like you're talking about, right? You're on rev and tax, you get a bill, you don't, or nuances of it, you just tap the community, right? Like figure it out. And again, I, I, I'm very communicative with people. And I have found, calling a school board, calling a legislator, calling anybody and just saying, hey, look, this is an issue that I have. And I have found every single person I've spoken with to be very receptive and they don't always see it the way I do. And that's fine. That's only appropriate. And there, there are plenty of times when I've called them and said, hey, look, this is what I'm seeing. And they're like, okay, hang on, that's, that's actually factually inaccurate. Let me help you understand the nuances here or, or just the broad strokes. I always get off the phone realizing, wow, okay, we, we just had a real conversation, right? Like, like human to human. I had a thing, they had a thing, we came together, we understand each other more clearly now. And, and I so appreciate that. You know, the, the sentiment that I think a lot of people have now, which is, oh, public officials don't care. They only care about your vote. I have not found that to be the case. And, and I have not, especially in the state, have found that, I have not found that, that public servants are anything but that. They, they seem to be very, very service oriented people that care about making the best community that they live in and not, you know, just enriching their little tiny, you know, dominion. Yeah, that's the word. I was missing it. Anyway.
Well, and that, and that's what, like I said, I have stories, just knocking on doors and talking to people who've moved into the state. One of the things that one of the individuals said to me, and it's from the, the C word, people don't like to talk about, but he, he told me, and I, I use this quote when I was in the legislature a lot, because he said, he said, you need to understand, because I asked him why he moved here. He said, you need to understand, I didn't move here for the schools, which are good. I didn't move here for my job, which is good, because actually he moved his business from California to here. And actually does most of his business in California, but he's
Can't fault him.
But he said, but he said, you have to understand, the reason I moved here are be, because of the policies that created what we have here. So please don't change those policies that created what we have here. That's why I moved here, is because we have a community based on the policies that was, that have been created here.
Right. And I appreciate that. I, I feel very similarly. The, the thing I'm very hesitant to is, is to self identify those policies. You know, my, my play here is to actually try to understand. And it's been exceedingly difficult. And I talk to people all day long about like, okay, how? Like, why? What are the forces? And to the degree that I can add in, well, okay, these are the problems that, that I saw, or these were the factors that, you know, that led to some of the broader issues. And not saying that I have the solution, but it's just, hey, look, this is, when we went down this road in education, this is what happened. Or when we, when the cities kind of did this, is, you know, I'm a property owner still in some of the very exceedingly liberal areas that I greatly disdain. But, you know, these were the problems and issues that, that came from doing these things. Like, you know, you're, you're talking about autonomy, personal agency, that, that's like the opposite of rent control.
Exactly.
Which is giving people the capacity and agency to enter into a business agreement that they both feel is mutually beneficial. When you go the opposite of that, you actually, it actually backfires on everyone. Because, you know, just using the rent control example, what you artificially do is give, you know, you take money from one person, give it to the other person, you're going to artificially reduce the number of housing units, because now the person getting the sweet deal is not going to move. So they're not going to have their normal turnover. You're not getting actual market rent. I mean, there are all these, there are all these problems that go along with it. So again, I have an appreciation for what you're saying.
And, and, and looking at, at history, you know, the, the old saying, those who don't study history are bound to repeat it. And so it, it has value to, and one, one of the things that I found in my life, because my parents are both passed away, but on, on, on an occasion or my, I was, I had a very close relationship with my grandfather, my paternal grandfather. And one of the things that I, every once in a while, I have in my mind something, boy, I'd just like to ask him that question. I know he would know the answer to that question if he were here. I know he would know the answer to that question. And so we have to know that there are people that have some body of information that we could use, we can use, that, not, not all the good ideas are, are from young people.
That's true. I appreciate that.
But, but again, I would like to thank you for what you're doing, because it's an essential part of what our founders gave us in this government. And that's, we have to have an informed and participating electorate. And you're helping us have that in our community. And so I just congratulate you for doing that.
Hey, I appreciate, thank you for having me. So, Missioner, thank you for coming today. I really appreciate you taking the time. I know it was a little bit difficult connecting with each other, but we made it happen. We got you in here. And, you know, win, lose or draw, as I tell everybody, I really appreciate your participation in the campaign and just bringing issues to light. Because the more we do that, the more we have competing forces, the better ideas we get. So again, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
MTU Studios is the proud producer for the Ada County Sheriff Podcast, the Idaho Wildlife Federation Podcast, the State Representative Ted Hill Podcast, the Idaho State PTA Podcast, and many more. If you or your organization is thinking about starting a podcast, MTU Studios would love to help. Just check out mtustudios.com.